And it looks like, just like, I'm not, I'm not understanding exactly what an update is. Maybe it means what it uses, what's the current status of where it is. So, that will be interesting to clean up, tune it to getting it done, or to get agreement on getting it done. Because I don't think we're good through the summer with the residents, the way it is.
Totally get it.
All right. Will you join me in the stand and join me in the pledge, I believe? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Mr. Dray, could you do the local?
Absolutely.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Sins?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Deale?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
All right. If there are no changes to the June first council minutes, I'd like to, or the, sorry, May twenty second council minutes, I'd like to leave those stand and move forward.
Wait, hang on. Agenda and then, sorry.
All right. I'd like to find out if there's any additional agenda changes to tonight's agenda, and then we'll take a vote. Any amendments?
All right with it.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Sucker?
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Deale?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes.
All right, now, if there's no changes or updates to the minutes from May twenty second, they will, they will stand.
You need to vote on that.
And we need to vote on that. So can I get a motion to vote on the minutes for May twenty second?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Deale?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes.
All right, moving to old business. Second reading ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty three, accepting the real estate transfer of property near Ohio one sixty one from M.I. Homes to HMO Homes of Central Ohio LLC. Get a motion?
Motion to approve second reading ordinance oh seven twenty twenty three.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Deale?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker?
Yes.
All right, we have no new business, so we'll move down into the discussion items. And first on the list is the village administrator evaluation process overview. So I'll kick that one off. We are in, the month of June, we determined would be the village administrator evaluation process. So the personnel and finance board came up with, they revised our evaluation process from our first round, and that has been submitted and approved from a document ready to move forward, and that will be sent out after this meeting to all of council, and we'll have two weeks to submit your feedback, and I'll collect that feedback. And this is the thought process, so it's open for discussion, and I will combine that into a single document, and then we'll set up a time to review, and then have the review with the village administrator. All right, is there any questions about this process?
Mr. President?
Yes.
This is like the annual thing, because she took office like a year ago, right?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm thinking annual is probably the maximum that, that we should, we should do for a, an evaluate, like a formal evaluation unless there's a reason to do one otherwise. So I'm, I'm just, you know, expressing an opinion here, not asking for a consensus or a vote or anything like that, just saying what I think that the performance to date has been exemplary, I think, and so if that continues, I see no reason for anything other than a, than an annual review, you know, for that process, so for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed.
So that actually came up in the personal finance committee, and certainly for more of you once a year is totally reasonable. I think we talked about it, not wanting to overdo it, and Ms. Lutte was there, so I'm not saying anything that's like, she's, you know, unaware of. What we did think though is that when we first gave her the position, we talked about how we wanted to, since she was new to being a city manager, and, you know, we want to have fairly regular check-ins. So we could, we could think about it, but I think the idea was maybe just a check-in mid-year around December as opposed to a formal makes more sense, and you just do the formal once a year, but you kind of have a executive, let her get anything off her chest that she may have, anything we have off our chest, so you don't have to wait a whole year. Two-fold one for that reason, the other was, the thought process was that if you waited a whole year, you really, you'll kind of mentally only evaluate like the last three months, because you don't go all the way back a year and say, oh, what went right or what went wrong. So it came up, I'm open to it, whatever Ms. Lutte wants to do, I, we could talk about it offline, but we did discuss that exact idea.
Yeah, I don't disagree with those sentiments, Mr. Terry. Check-in, you know, constant, I think she gets constant feedback anyway, on, on what she does that people like or don't like, but I, you know, check-in is different from a formal thing, and I'm okay with that, that sounds perfect to me.
All right. Any other discussion on review process? All right, let's move down to solicitor permit application and guidelines review. Am I turning that over to you or Justin?
Yeah, my son.
Okay.
Just real quick, I just wanted to go over this with the on the soliciting. First, I want to explain how a solicitor's permit works here in the village, okay? So it goes to solicit, because we have to, they have to get their permit process, and that permit process, they come through the police department, they pay their fifty dollars for the permit. We check them basically for warrants, to see if they have warrants and stuff before we send them out to the, to the public. You don't believe how many people actually do have warrants that are solicitors. Here lately, we've been like, we're worried with solicitors, I think we've had twenty in the last thirty days, and a lot of that has to do with the storm that we had, basically. I hate to call them storm chasers, but that's basically what they come to do. I reached out to some other communities around us to find out what their process was, and their process is basically, a lot of them, like Dublin, Hillier, Marysville, they make to go through a background check, which means that they, they do the same thing we do to our employees. We fingerprint them, we do a BCI check, to make sure that they don't have any criminal record, these that we don't want here in town over there. I mean, basically, like Dublin and Hillier, they're all automatically denied if they have any kind of sexual offenses. So they're denied for that, and then also they could be denied for like break, break of entries, and, you know, probably anything like that. And then also, because I would like to start on that ourselves, but change our ordinance to reflect that, because I don't like just strangers going up to our citizens, to the doors that we don't really know. And then we do, we get a complaint about somebody who doesn't have a, and the prosecutors here right now, they can actually testify to this, that we don't usually tolerate it, we just, we cite them for it, because we have, it's, it's, it's publicized all, and every entrance into town, the site says you have to have a permitted solicit. We have it on our website, we have the rules and everything else that you have to go through. We have no knock registry, they still knock on the doors that sometimes happen, no knock registry, so basically we came up with a tolerance, if we get called or we find you, you'll have a permit, we cite you for it. There's nothing I can do, you can handle here legally. So anyhow, I would like to do, and also raise the fees to do the permit fees from maybe fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars or a hundred dollars, and look at how long, right now that permit lasts a year, some places it lasts two weeks, some places it lasts six months, and some places it lasts a year. So I'd like to look at that and maybe, maybe change that, or maybe leave that a year, but start going with background checks, I just want to kind of get your guys' opinion on that.
I personally would go with your recommendations.
Yeah.
I think that's your wheelhouse, so I'm, I'm good with whatever you recommend.
So no solicitor at all?
If that's it.
I think we tried that a couple of years ago, but nobody seemed to really take it.
What is the, how long does it take to go through that process from the moment you request to be a solicitor to being approved?
A week after most, but this, if we do the background checks and stuff, it's going to take a little bit longer, because we'd actually fingerprint them, and they have to do the same thing as like an employee or, you know, well, we have to wait for their background check to come from BCI, it could take anywhere from two days to, I mean, thirty days. It all depends on how long, you know, it takes to be said, get it to us, and then, and they would also cover the costs for that, I think it's, you know, thirty-five dollars or fifty dollars or something like that, because we have to pay BCI for the background check. We have the, we have the reason, or the way to paper benefit here, but we still have BCI.
That would be okay with, with banning property crime convictions as well.
What's that?
You said like the B and A and perp, or E.
And I was hoping, Paul was here, because I was going to kind of ask you about those, you know, and I'll still be able to call on our employees, if we do anything, because I want to find out, if it's okay to deny them for that reason. I know that other local places are going it that way.
Does that require an ordinance change to add criminal records to your back, to your filter?
Yeah, we'd have to indicate that in the ordinance that they have.
Okay, yeah, so we have plenty of time to discuss and vet that.
Yeah, actually, just actually updated the ordinance, probably whether there were some changes under that, I mean, just little changes, stuff like addresses.
Okay, so how many, how many solicitor permits do we have out active this year? Do you have an idea about that?
Probably for twenty.
Twenty or so?
Yeah, they don't usually come in one time.
Okay.
But I can give you an example, the perp vacuum people, when they come into town, they're usually like five or six in their car, each one of them that I've found is like, they're all from different states, nobody's from, they're all from out of state, and they're all from different states, not one of them's usually from the same state. You know, and we've had fifty people come in at one time from one company to get permits, and we require each one of those people to come in and show an ID before we give a permit. But, you know, like just a year ago or two years ago, we had someone come in and fifty people at one time to get permits.
So one of the reasons to have solicitor permits is to, is I think, correct me if I'm wrong, to prevent the inundation of our community with people knocking on doors, I mean, just people, either good people or bad people, doesn't matter. So we don't, it doesn't sound like we're in that situation where we have an overwhelming number of people getting permits. Is that, I mean, twenty doesn't sound like that many for, for ours.
Just beginning the season.
Okay, so what do you, do you have a number?
I'm not saying that we're a lump of people coming to get permits, what I'm saying is I don't like, you know, I don't like sending people out to our residents that we have no idea who they are.
Exactly.
You want to take it up.
And that's the other.
I don't like knowing who they are if they have some kind of criminal record.
Right, no, that's, that I think is the more important reason to do the permits.
Especially for low kids, you know, people who are more than kids.
For sure, and if people.
I'm not saying that those are all solicitors.
A level of, yeah, give them a level of comfort that, that person with the displaying line is, is not a, a, a bad apple. So, I'm sorry.
No, I've cut you off. What did you say is the current length that the solicitor process is now? Like how long, how long are they, do they stay active?
A year.
One year, okay. What's your recommendation for?
I haven't made, I don't know my recommendation right now, because I'm still looking at other places around us and trying to fill what they're doing.
Okay.
I know, I think like London has one where it's, you know, for a certain amount of money it's two weeks, for another certain amount of money it's six months, another amount of money it's a year. So usually these people come in, they get done what they want to within a week, they never come back.
I like the idea of the background check and thoroughly vetting people. I know we have the no-knock list, but that doesn't always, that's the way you can tell when somebody hasn't gone through the process.
Right, right now, if a solicitor comes to my door and I'm on the no-knock list, do I, I call the police?
Or if, if they have a permit and they still lock on your door, and you're on the no-knock registry, then we revoke that permit.
Okay.
Because they're told when they pick a permit up, and it also is, it's only permitted, and it's also on our website where they apply for it. And I know that a lot of people already come in with their background check, because other places request that, they'll come in with their BCI background check already, and if that's the case, then if it's within a year, like, we won't have to, we won't have to do that.
They'll work on a draft and.
Yes. I'll go with Paul first.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? All right. Move down to council twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four goals and objective review. We had stated at the, at once, at the beginning of the year, when we set council goals, that we would review them at mid-year to see how we're doing, and if there's anything we need to change or update, we'll move, so this is that time. So it's open for discussion.
So I can start. So, so I looked at the list, I looked at everything, and this is going to be, I'll just read exactly what I wrote down.
Okay.
Here's, here's what we have as currently open items that I could think of off the top of my head in five minutes. DRC, CIC, Housing Council, noise ordinance completion, transfer agreement, water treatment plan expansion, DRB rewrite, zoning rewrite, parks and rec camping, future pastime park, long-term capital plan, finish the streetscape, parking lot, normal stuff like the budget zoning, and the fee structures for things like DRB applications, appeals, and I just added while we were sitting here, solicitor permit application. So what I'm hesitant to say about adding any goals is my overarching goal is we've got to get done what we have started, and then I just wrote down, again, I did this like five minutes, what I thought the issues were, that were why we're behind. We're bogged down by ad hoc handling of issues, we're bogged down by outdated codes, we're bogged down by not having things already done, staff's overwhelmed, council's overwhelmed, gross obviously harder than having a stable thing where you already have everything, we're lacking good policies and procedures, I think we talked about this at the economic development meeting, we feel like we do everything ad hoc, lack of time from engineering resources, from legal resources, from IT resources, so. When I think of the goals, it's solving that, and I almost, and not that I want to throw out everything we have listed, but we need to kind of rethink why we have so many open items, why we're not closing things, and why, like, it, because I, I talked to staff, they're, they're overwhelmed, I sit here, I know we're short on resources, so I think that the number one thing we need to do is like, take a big old step back and figure out, and I, and I actually thought about how I would write this as a goal, is like, do we need to do an organizational assessment of where we're understaffed, where we need help from legal resources? I know we, and I would say this if Paul was here too, you know, Paul's committed to a lot of other things, like do we have the commitment and time that, that we need, do we need to pay for someone to be here once a week? I know that that worked with the engineering group a little bit better. Do we need to bring a consultant in to write our policies and procedures to kind of get us up to date? I think, I, I've talked with Ms. Lutte about this before on like things like finance and everything, and I, I think that it would make your guys' lives a lot easier, but it's really hard, while everything's going, to pause everything while we're getting hit with development after development, everything, and we're making decisions that are going to be impacting us long-term ad hocly, like we're making them one by one, and we're making DRB decisions off a bad DRB code. Like we, I don't know if we, we can't stop the DRB process, but we need to take the time to get these things done. Zoning code, I don't blame Mr. Hutchinson or, you know, but zoning code, I was hoping by now we'd have enough to do zoning code that we would be following, and every new development we'd be going through. So like for me, I think we need to do an assessment of where we need resources, how the, how we as council can help staff, I think we have the right staff, but I don't know if we have enough of those staff, what we can do to bring in and alleviate the pain points of these bottlenecks, because if we make mistakes, like we're, the mistakes that we make are going to be more permanent and long, like long-term damaging than just slowing down and saying, all right, I wouldn't add one more thing to our list. Whatever the corridor study is, whatever we have, unless we're already paid for it, and I apologize, if we already paid for it, would you do it? But if we haven't done it, if we haven't started it, I wouldn't add a single thing to our to-do list, and I would just refocus and ease up on the staff and get the resources we need, like I said, engineering, legal, IT, HR, whatever it is, and I don't know, so I guess my number one goal would be organizational assessment, structure, number two, get the to-do list done, number three, policies and procedures and help them out, and I would honestly, and I know I helped write those, I, I literally wrote those, but I looked at those and I was like, of all the things I would want us doing, none of them are on that list. I want that transfer agreement done, I want the zoning code done, I want the DRB rewritten, I want the noise ordinance settled, I want all those things done so we can actually move forward. So I don't know how you write that down, but that's why you're the council president now, but that's, that would be my thoughts on all of this, is that we have to, like, and I, I feel for staff so much, like I sit there and try to talk to them about this, and they're like, what do you want me to work on? Like, I'm sure, like, we're about to start the budget and everything too, so there's, there's my support.
I, I feel on the zoning code, like, because as planning and zoning, we have, we realized that the shortcomings of what was being presented for residential development, and that is what we, we spent previously a long time trying to make sure that we get that right and going through it, but then also working again with Mr. Hutchinson to talk about what we need, how, how to bring it back to a P, a planned residential development where it gives the flexibility, but we have our standards to be, to tell the developers this is what we, you know, we're not going to budge from this.
And I don't think, and just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not pointing at like, oh, the planning zoning is not getting it done, I'm saying that we're pulling the people that are responsible for doing this in so many directions and not providing them with the support they need, that I don't know how we would expect them to be able to close these items.
Right.
And get these things, so like, your day-to-day developments come in, and they're bouncing against a bad code, or maybe a good code that just needs cleaned up, a DRB comes in and it's bounced up against a bad DRB, I think everyone agrees it's a bad DRB code, so then we have appeals, then we have more process, and then it's like, we're bogged down by like, bad fundamentals that I think are, I just go, I just go back, I literally go back and ask, I would sit down with Ms. Lutte and all the people and say, what can we do, what's important to you guys, as opposed to posing like, our kind of like, oh, we should do a study on them, like, and don't get me wrong, all this stuff on that council goal list, I want to do at some point, but if we do it now, we'll just do it a bad way.
Mr. Terry, that was a load of, of, of perspective on it, and I don't disagree with, with that perspective. There's, there's a process here to get things done in Plain City that we don't know about yet, we have not implemented, and we have not a clue how to do that, because this is like decades-long behavior. Things get on the agenda and they just drop off and never reappear. So, and that, I think that is one of the principal issues, if we keep them in front of us as a council, then we have to deal with them every meeting that we have, or, or pass them over, because there's nothing new to report on those, but it gives you pause to ask the question, what's the status of this project and when is it going to be done, which we should have had a date in the beginning before we even started, when is it going to be done? And if, and when things go wrong, or they get extended, the due date gets pushed out, like the zoning code, and I, pardon me for mentioning it, this has been around for over a year, or more, I can't even remember when it started in the middle of my, my term on council, and honestly, there is a way to get that done by council. Council needs to do something about that lack of productivity in the zoning commission, and I say that, you know, with some trepidation here, because I know they work hard when they, in their readings, but there's something missing here. The, the, either the way it's being done in zoning committee, like the whole apple, the whole pumpkin at once, maybe wasn't the right approach, because it was too big of a bite.
And, and I don't mean to, but I want to make sure that it's stated that we did have staff change, I feel we have a staff member who is listening to the residents that are sitting on planning and zoning saying, this is what we want, versus it was done and we look back, we're like, we can't, we can't pass it on.
So as long as we're talking about goals, let me ask you, what is your prognosis of the completion date to submit all that zoning code to council?
I would say that we are ready to bring the, the, the housing portion to council. Mr. Hutchinson is, we have a good code, we're cleaning it up, basically, so.
Okay, so when would, would you see that?
Should be June.
What part, would, the housing part of the code would be, you say, ready?
I think for public, we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, and I think he was trying to get the commercial part, so it can all be updated at one, that, once, for at least that part, but yeah, it should be pretty soon.
And I don't, I don't want to pick on the planning commission, because I think the planning commission struggles is a symptom of a bigger problem that, again, they're trying to handle like a constant flow of developments in their meetings that like, and, and I don't know how we would expect them to do that and rewrite anything as a group of volunteers, like, we are, we are asking a group of volunteers to do this, and at a speed at which, you know, our problems are growing faster because of, developers don't, they're not, you know, they're not volunteers that are meeting once a month.
Mr. Terry, let me, let me, let me qualify what I said, the fact that we don't have the zoning code is an issue, that's a council's issue, that we don't have it, it's on council, that's where the blame relies, lies on this, of not keeping in touch with them closely and measuring their progress and noticing what's happening on that committee is the, is the reason why the committee is doing the work the way they think it's the best to do it, and I don't dispute that, okay? It's just council has maybe a, a, a tighter timeline, our expectation for delivery than what the, than was what was communicated to the zoning committee, let's, let me just say it that way. So I think we need to maybe do some self-examination here on how we're going to run as a council, and how we're going to commit these things to our committees, and how we're going to man, or indicate to them that these, these issues that you're working on have a due date, that you have to get it back to council. If they don't like the due date, they can negotiate that, I mean, it's their communication, okay? But so far, we haven't done any of that, and I think it would be appropriate to do it.
Sure, and I, I fully agree that the failure is on us, on all this, like, what I'm saying is what can we do to empower and give more resources to any of these things? So if we want a new DRB code rewritten, right, so what can I do to engage Paul or his firm or the DRB to get that done? That's on us, I don't put that on like the energy committee. So, so I think providing the right resources, making sure that we are tackling these items is a hundred percent us, it's not.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Terry, and I think a lot of those questions that you're seeking answers to would fall out of that process of giving due dates and, and type, and more tightly, and I'm not saying, you know, day-to-day or anything like that, but at least monitoring in some respect the progress of our, of the issues that are in committees. Okay, so if, if, if they said, well, we can't do that by then, you can ask why, okay? Well, because we don't have enough solicitor time on, on, on this issue, we need more. Okay, council can make that happen.
Yeah.
Okay, and, or we don't have enough people working in the, in the finance office, because they can't get the data to us fast enough, we can deal with that problem and we can take care of that, in theory, or maybe in practice, so, anyway, that's, I think we're on the same page with this, yeah. Or maybe in practice. So anyway, that's, I think we're on the same page with this. Yeah.
It's a lot of information, but we need to move forward. I don't, I don't know what the move forward step is, so.
So I I I would look over here and I'd say, it, do you agree with us, with with me at least, I I won't speak to a council that like there's some level of like overwhelmed because we have so many eggs, like go so many things. What is it? Two big pots on the stove at the same time? Like, I I think that the best way to solve this is to limit what's out there and then empower you guys and maybe have more frank conversations of you saying, hey, Michael or, you know, Mr. Sens, we need, we need to hire someone to come in here and write us an HR policy. We need to hire someone to come in here and write us a DRB, you know, policy. And if that's gonna cost us money, I think maybe that's what I think we need. And again, I don't, I I know this is a goals conversation, but it's a goals objectives and we can put out a little connectivity study. But who's gonna implement that study? Like, we don't have the staff to implement it. So like, I would much rather spend our time and money on like tackling the open items and just crossing those things off the list and doing it. So I guess, what do you think is best?
Yeah, I've already seen in the past year, year and a half, the impact that some additional staffing can have with with the events, uh, the zoning. Jason, that economic development thing that they've already put in place and the more things that are coming and what an impact just having someone focus on those goals is. Um, I think this is a good time to talk about it and that Mayor, I know you mentioned maybe a council retreat. We're trying to do something similar with department heads about where the big gaps are and how we can see about finding a way to move forward in those goals, either, you know, outsourcing, um, reprioritizing or however we wanna do that. So I think if we both have those types of meetings, we can decide a way forward and during budget season is a good time to do it.
And also historical knowledge of, like, I know Ms. Ferguson's mentioned this a a lot of why things have been done in the past or why we've gotten to some of our issues and just because there has been staff turnover and sharing those feelings as well.
I, but I, I guess I would go back to, I don't wanna put it off too long. I would like to see something coming forward with a plan, with dates to get us on track so that we can start checking things off. I just, I don't wanna get hung up in budget season. If we can start things now, I think we should start now. At least start forming those ideas and.
Yeah, and I also wanted to be noted that, you know, most of these goals are in progress or aren't. Um, being done for, we have the rest of the year to be done. So it's not like, you know, nothing's happened.
No, no, I I I don't think, I think. I want to make sure this is your evaluation. This is our evaluation. This is more of our evaluation or your evaluation. This is more of like how we are, what we are feeling. So I would say that the way I would tackle this in any other form of my life is I would just put up with a bullet. Okay, what what is the problem? Problem number one, VRB code, right? What are possible solutions? And like list off, here's the possible solutions. Here's the cost and here's what it's gonna take to get it done. And then we implement it that way and we don't have to wait till a council retreat. We can put those together over email to each other.
We need a list.
Yeah.
And we need to prioritize that list and then prioritize the work items within each of those list items.
And I think you could do that. I bet you Miss Lupton probably do it right now. She'll go, I know it drives me crazy, this, that, this. You know, you probably go through Mr. Stanford, Mr. Hutchinson, uh, Renee, and Miss Son, I should use full names. Uh, and just ask them this, and I bet they'll, they'll know it better than we, and we can add in our, oh, we think that, you know, the noise ordinance, for example, is a pain point because we have to talk about it so much and we have to work through it. But we get bogged down in these, we only have X amount of hours a month to meet. And we get big bogged down on rehashing committee decisions or talking about the same things and not moving forward on the big ticket things like transfer agreements and water treatment plan expansion and sewer like, so like for me, I just want to like, I wanna write it out, what are our problem, pain point areas from a staff council area and just tack, and just like say, here's what we tackle. And I just do it now. I do it this week, next week.
Well, I think one thing that we can do is every, every meeting that we have in here, we have an area for discussion items. And multiple times we've had discussion items, none. We have twelve goals that we set as a council. There should be at least two of these on every one, you know, once a month. Every, you could have one, because we have two meetings a month, we have one on there, just to rehash it, to come back and touch base and where we stand with this. So it doesn't get lost in the weeds. We can have, you know, if it's dealing with with the zoning, we make sure that the zoning people are here so we can ask them questions back so we can get that. So it doesn't get lost and we're sitting there going through, because I went through some of these and some, some of these things we have done, but not complete. And 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 so we we get a good start and then we sort of miss, we have A and B done or A and C done, but we don't have B done. So I I think if we, instead of just rehashing it every six months, you know, which is great, I love that we actually set goals. I think this is the first time I think our councils have done it and we actually put dates on them. We thought it would get done. Is it getting ready to hash back? But I think we could take one of these and just make sure it gets hit all the, you know, we, it at least gets said, all right, are we talking about this? You know, the website, where do we stand with this? We need an update with that. You know, that could be. I don't know where we stand with the website right now. I just know it's being rehashed. Where are we at? We were told a couple of months ago, I thought it was close, but I haven't heard anything since. So I think if we bring that back on our discussion, I just at least list one of these down.
And and just to be clear, you know, we have, we have the three meetings and one of them is devoted to the work, you know, the planning session. And we do spend time going through a list of items.
Right.
But what we haven't done is listed all of the things and prioritize those in it. Like, there's some prioritization in there. But we really need to look at what is holding those things up. What is, what, why is, why is this particular item still there every single month?
I couldn't agree more. And I think one general statement I would make is the list is growing faster than it's being closed.
Yes.
Which is a problem for us, right? And it's a problem that we should address and tackle. And those resources, we are the gatekeepers to those resources. So we should be opening those gates and making sure that we are work like, we're not the hindrance. Like, I don't wanna be the hindrance. I think there's areas where we are. Because I think our meeting three times a month and maybe not providing as much. And frankly, like I said, like, if we had policies and procedures, we had a clean DRB code, we would, our schedules would open up and we could talk about things that are important to us, like the website and everything else, but we spent our time on other things. So I I think we need to do a little bit of a triage and like, uh, let's throw resources at some stuff and fix some stuff.
Be reactive and not proactive.
One hundred percent. I literally, in that economic development meeting, there was stakeholders from the village, like, it was like staff, council, mayor was there. And literally every one of us has said the exact thing. We are so reactive and we're not proactive. And that's us. That's our role.
I'm just gonna throw this out here. I don't have a specific recommendation for how to do it, but all of us work in companies uh, or have in in some respect where you have projects. And the element that's missing here that every company that has projects has is a project manager. If I will, I will promise you, guarantee you that if we had had one project manager in the village assigned to oversee the progress of each one of these goals as viewed as a project, then we would be further along with these than we are today. So having said that, I don't know how to do that. I'm okay, it, we would have to hire a person as a project manager. We would get things done. Because he would be holding people accountable for for progress and reporting to to the the bosses, which is the council, on on issues that are coming up, delays that are coming up, lack of progress and what the reason is and stuff like that. So just as a thought that, you know, how do we implement that that function uh, in the village? Sure.
But sure, I think, I think another thing we can do tonight is we should start leaving these meetings with like a to do action, like a, this is what we're doing and this is who's doing it. And just like, and I, Mr. Sens, you're, it's got to be like, I would just in that, like, when we talk about noise ordinance or something later tonight, be like, all right, here's the next steps, here's when it's gonna be done. And like, just so we can move forward. And that one I'm picking on only because it's on the list tonight, right? But we're gonna have an opportunity to do this. And if we end it with like, oh, we should get back together and talk about this in the future. Six months later, we talk about it, but we gotta kind of restart the whole conversation. We lose a bunch of momentum.
Mr. Cherry, Mr. U Daly mentioned possibly just putting a couple of items on the agenda. And nailing them to the agenda until they get done. And uh, and we can start with a couple. My suggestion would put all of them on the agenda.
I think I did that one meeting and overwhelmed everyone. I think I, I think last time, you know, the mayor and I put every single open item and it was like, oh, my goodness.
Did you say, why are we here till ten PM at night?
So which, maybe tonight we can select which two we want to be on the agenda that are the most important and can maybe have the closest or closest to completion. So we can kind of push those over the, over the finish line.
Okay.
The thing is, some of, some of these have have to involve other committees. And so we can't just, we can give them dates or whatever, but I think some of these we're relying on other groups to finish it.
I would like to see then on the committee um, agendas, like if it goes to, say, planning and zoning or DRB, put the goal, council goal and put it on the agenda. So then our committee members also know, here's what we're tasked to do.
Right, it needs to get compared, compared to.
So my my one overarching comment though is that tackling these one by one, it, we should certainly do. But it doesn't solve the overarching problem of how we get in this situation in the first place and what organizational needs. And I think, and I'm on personal finance, so I'm okay if you guys create a goal that's like, you know what, we have interviews and we figure out what's needed and where's resources lacking and we report back to you as here, you guys are assigned that task to personal finance. I'm sure Renee and Haley are on that. They'll tell us all the things. You know, so that there is, do we think, if we do what we're describing only, we're just put things on the list, we say, we're gonna tackle this, we're doing it ad hoc. We're doing the thing that causes this problem. You need to fix the underlying fundamental policies, procedures, codes that lead to these problems. So that would just be my overarching is like, I think we do that in concert with some resource reviews, some staff reviews of I, like I said, I think we have, we bring Jason in and Mr. Stanford and we got a huge step forward on things, right? So like, where else could we bring someone in or pay for some resource that would bring us a whole nother step forward? An engineering person, I'm sure, I think now they have them in like the office once a week. And they've told me, like, we get so much done, like, where can we find opportunities to do things like that to make us move forward? As we, so we, when we meet six months from now, we're like, oh, look, the list is at least manageable. Like, when I started writing those down, I was just like, oh, I was like, oh, unmanageable. God, perfect. Like, we can't solve these problems tonight.
So are we gonna put two, two things on the agenda then? I, I mean, I have, and who decides which, what, I guess, what's, those are gonna be? Does council have opinions about which two of these goal things or projects that we could put on the agenda? What do you guys think?
I wouldn't pick anything on that list.
My desire would also be tackling the big things that are holding us back.
Yeah.
From moving forward, which is we've got water, we've got zoning code, these big, hu, these are paralyzing staff and ultimately us. So to me, you can't really move forward on these things until you address the big things.
I think we need, we need to address those and identify what are the barriers, what are the bottlenecks that are slowing those things down? What are the resources that are needed to move them forward? That's, that's our to do list.
So that's what I would put, that would be my agenda.
That are those, yeah.
And my challenge would be to staff, come tell us what, where you guys are lacking and what you need help with. Because we can make the policy, but we got it, we have to know how to get there.
And I think it's a good idea myself. I, other council people can speak to this, but I think it's a great idea to have personal finance, speak with staff, um, kind of see where that all stands so that we're not getting in the weeds one by one, talking to the village administrator or other people. Let them deal with it, come back to council and tackle it from there with what resources are needed or what the plan is. But that's up to everybody.
So I know we don't love email threats, but I think uh, if a couple bullets with with us, and maybe Mr. Sens, you just take the things that we say to you that you think are so I could tell you mine or not, is I think policies, procedures, zoning code, DRB code. Fundamental things that we need to have.
Say, say again.
Policies and procedure, and that one's huge because I think it's everywhere. We we find new policies and procedures we don't have every week. Um, zoning code and DRB code. Cause I think if we have those things cleaned up and done, we are freed up to do other things. And I would ask, uh, Miss Lupton and Mr. Hutchinson, what do you guys need to make that happen? And we, then we have to be challenged with giving those resources. But those are my three. I mean, but those are like those fundamental ones I'm talking about.
I, you know, you're not gonna believe this, but, but you probably will. For the, for the last six to nine months, I've been sitting on an idea about a new committee that's composed only of council members. It would be called something like the Policy Rules and Oversight Committee, which is exactly charged with doing what you're talking about. Uh, in terms of code revisions, noise ordinance, VRB code. They would, they would vet that process and ensure that that kind of document got to council uh, without having to rely on a scattered kind of conversation in council about what's good for a noise ordinance or what's good for a DRB code and give instructions uh, to the law director uh, about what council conceivably wants in that kind of a code. Rules, I mean, and policy, policies, we, we have, we have scant policies written in the, in the, in Plain City. And most other communities that are the size we're gonna be have formal policies documented, written in a book. Administrative policy, financial policy, other kinds of things. We need to get there. And that's why I think the 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 Policy Rules and Oversight Committee would be a useful thing to have. You know, the idea of new committees is not popular. The idea of a committee composed only of council members is not popular, but I I see little benefit I, uh, from having it open to um, uh, residents, uh, simply because of the expertise issue. Uh, if we had, and it, that could, you know, that is open for discussion though. But so anyway, that was the idea I've been sitting on. And uh, for what it's worth, if council wants to take it up, I'll be happy to have that discussion.
We don't have a committee with council because that's what we are. Well, if we wanna, if we wanna look at the codes, we can look at the codes.
This would be a smaller working group. Would it have to put in way more time than than this? Plus their council members' stuff, because you couldn't do all the work, this committee work in a council meeting. Right. So so that's why it's, it's a, it's a committee instead of have a committee of the whole uh, kind of, kind of open.
Yeah.
Any discussion. And they could meet a lot more frequently than you can get all council members together. There's a lot of work needs to be done there.
Yeah, and and I think, I think, I, I'd have to think about all the implication of that. I don't think it's a terrible idea of having a working group to have a lot more time. I don't know of any who has all the time. I'd certainly put staff on that committee. I certainly wouldn't make it just us dictating policies of HR with, you know, I don't really to be honest with you, I don't know where the HR policies are lacking, like the staff do, the ones that deal with it. So I wouldn't make it only council, but I I would be cool if it's like a closed, we don't need residents on that type of stuff. But if that helps it go and we hire our consultant, I'm thinking more of like how the charter worked. Where you had a facilitator come in, you've met very often and you tackled a really big project in, I think we did it in like under a year, eighteen months. And there's a lot of council members that were on that. And it was a regular meeting, regular work session that everyone's committed to. If that's what you're getting at, like something like that, I understand. And then I think that makes sense to me. But again, I might, I I I think we should have the conversation with staff not right this second because they might be like, that would slow us down even further. Like, no, don't do that. Let us hire a consultant, let us do it, let us go forward. I think that, so I'm not against it, but I wanna have that conversation.
I'd like to have that conversation.
Yeah, I think maybe we have it. So Mr. Sens, maybe the goal, the, then next week or between now and the next council meeting, like hammer that out. We could have some meetings with just a few council members and staff to say like, how do we, let's have some frank discussions about how do we help fundamentally change? Because like, like I said, I think, I think Mr. Reed said earlier, the staff we have is not the problem. It's, it's I, it's the hindrances to the staff getting the work done, which is probably mostly sitting around this table.
So do we have two agenda items now that we're gonna?
So far, I have three. And four, we decided a fourth.
Yeah, that's Mr. Udale, if he can handle three.
No, I just don't want us to get overwhelmed when we get lost and not do anything about it. I think if we focus on a couple and we actually do something about it, instead of just, oh, let's talk about it and then we're gonna table it till the next time. Or we gotta make a decision on these two as well and we get, put them on the discussion items.
I'll vote for whatever's on the agenda that people want on there. You know, I just want to get it started.
Okay. This will be formulated in an email.
Cool. Can we, are these gonna be on council's regular agenda also then? I think, yes, thank you.
Right, any additional conversation about this?
Haley, does this scare you or is this positive?
No, we've been talking about a lot of it lately, so it aligns with everything.
Ms. Lefton.
All right, uh, we're gonna move on to the last, uh, the last discussion item on the list is the noise ordinance. And I'm gonna queue up, uh, Chief McKee and our prosecutor to give us an introduction of why we're here and why this is on the agenda. Though I can also do some of that as well.
Well, essentially, I think we all know why we're here.
Yeah.
And when we just, we, we first started discussing this three years ago, the noise ordinance, and I, I said at that time, it was so subjective when it came to the police making those decisions and stuff about the noise ordinance and stuff. That was basically confirmed a couple weeks ago with this, again, this, I don't know if everybody's about this, prosecutor Nick Atkins from Madison County. When, you know, and, and again, we can cite people all day long for the noise ordinance, okay? It comes down to him wanting to perceive what the, the, the charge is, and that's exactly what happened. And he felt like, that he, he couldn't move forward with those, because there was so much subjection in that ordinance. Am I right? And he gets explains, what's that?
Want to go ahead?
Yep.
Do you mind if I?
Please.
Yes. Yeah, my name's Jenny Atkins, Madison County prosecutor. I appreciate you giving me time to address you. I talked to Chief McKee about this issue over the last couple of weeks. And, um, I, I want to first say, I, I really don't have an agenda as to how you approach this issue. I want to give you my perspective on the ordinance that you have in place and answering the questions. I'm, I'm gonna enforce, you know, whatever ordinance you choose to put in place. Just so everybody knows, uh, the prosecutor's office has a contract with the village to enforce the misdemeanor violations on behalf of the village. And so, and we take that on in the municipal court in London. And when we get a case, you know, we're, we're looking at your ordinance and we're looking at the police report. And we have to utilize prosecutorial discretion. We're, we're doing that. But I want to get into some of the language of the statute and, and just give you some insight of what we're dealing with. So I, I think this all starts with what the goal of council is, what, what are you trying to accomplish when you have your ordinance in place?
Mr. Atkins?
Yeah.
A quick question.
Sure.
My understanding is that the, the suit that went to municipal court was, was failed because of vagueness? Is that the word? Am I, do I have that right?
So I, I don't know exactly which case you're talking about. I know of two recent charges.
The one where, where he was cited for, the business downtown was cited for, for too loud of noise. He went to court with it and it was thrown out of court because of, the ordinance was vague. Okay, so I want to, I only want to say this so that as you go through the language, you might address if it's, if there's vagueness in there. Pardon me?
No, it wasn't thrown out of court. The prosecutor decided not.
Okay.
The most recent charge that you're talking about, the prosecutor's office declined prosecution. So there was not a finding by the court that the statute, the substance of it is vague. I decline prosecution.
Because you thought it was vague? Or for what reason?
Because I didn't think that the evidence that was presented to our office met the statutory elements. I didn't think it was.
Okay, so that, that statute is not officially vague?
Maybe I should address it at this point, because we keep saying vague. There's a constitutional, uh, level there where an ordinance could be found void for vagueness, because it's not, doesn't give you sufficient, sufficient information. In two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, when this ordinance came up, the issue at the time was, we were talking about, do we do decibel meters or do we do, keep it reasonable standard? Council wanted to stick with a reasonable standard. That ordinance was taken directly from an Ohio Supreme Court case that said that the statute was, or that the ordinance was constitutional. That's why that language is in there.
And, and to add on to what Paul said, Madison County municipal court actually made the same finding. There was a challenge to the constitutionality of this ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you on that, but as you go through the wording, point out, if you could point out the problems with the wording that you found.
Vagueness is not necessarily the issue, maybe ambiguity. Uh, there's discretion there. That's, that's really what I'm talking about.
Okay.
So if you look at the statute, so it starts with, no person shall generate or permit to be generated noise or loud sound from a source that says for an unnecessary or unreasonable length of time. That's subject to interpretation. It also goes on to say, which is plainly audible and likely to cause inconvenience or annoyance to persons of ordinary sensibilities. So all of this language is, is open to interpretation. So we're looking at the facts that the police officers write up in their narrative in their to the office and determine whether we can prove this case, because it is a criminal case. And so we have the burden of proving it beyond a reasonable doubt that this charge was committed. And so I know of two recent citations, one was dismissed and one was declined. In the case that was dismissed, the alleged violation occurred before the period of time listed in the statute that indicates that's a prima facie unlawful act. So prima facie essentially means later on its face. When you look at on its face, that's unlawful. And so we have the hours where it would be prima facie unlawful. So Sunday through Thursday, anything after nine PM, Friday and Saturday, anything after eleven PM. One of those violations occurred prior to those hours. It was early in the evening. And so looking at the time of the violation and the way the narrative was written, we didn't think it was a statute, that's an offense. The second charge that was declined, I was just brought up, uh, the officer in his narrative indicated he thought it was reasonable. And so the individual complaining, the plaintiff, who was a, a neighbor to the, uh, the business that was having a concert, uh, they were the ones that came forward, signed the complaint, said they thought it was reasonable. The officer's narrative disagreed with them. So when we're approaching the statute of the prosecutor's office and looking at enforcement, based on the language there, we really are looking forward to more egregious violations, the ones that are very clear. Definitely the ones that are after those prescribed timeframes and then moving forward with those. I know there are a couple options, I, I can think of a couple options of how it can be addressed. But in talking with the police department, they're uncomfortable being in a situation where they're having to make, they're having to make a decision that is going to put them in a position where one party is going to be upset with them. And because the language of the statute is somewhat ambiguous, it's a judgment call. I'm, I'm comfortable doing that. I'm comfortable making that decision, but it's what we do every day. I get why a police department who interacts with people in community groups and what they wouldn't want to be in that position. So in dealing with some of that uncertainty, one, one of the things I want to point out in terms of us prosecuting, when you think about a defense counsel attacking the case, let's say we're having a trial and the defense counsel is representing the client who's been charged with this violation, they're gonna try to attack the credibility of the officer. And the reason they're gonna do that is because they're gonna argue whether or not the statute is being applied consistently in the community. And you can easily think of a line of questions where that officer on the stand is going to be asked, well, you know, what, what experience do you have in determining whether sound is, is a reasonable level or not? What knowledge you have about decibel levels or meter readings? What training have you received to make sure every officer is applying the statute equally? And so they're gonna be attacked in that, and then vice versa, the state's gonna be relying on their, their credibility to establish it is. And I always say that because I want to point out, this is a criminal code. We're looking at sanctions here. You know, first violation is just a fine, but second violation up to thirty days jail, third violation every year, sixty days jail. So we're, we're taking those into consideration when we're approaching these cases. If you, if you really look at modifying the ordinance to include a decibel reading, that's, that's an option, but I, I will say, you're gonna get in a situation where you're gonna have an increase in citations because it's just gonna be obvious on its face, okay, this is over the level, and your police department's gonna lose discretion there. And, you know, sometimes discretion is a good thing. Now, maybe they give a warning on the first offense, but I, I don't have a problem with them having discretion. But I think if there's, there are parameters, maybe have a call.
So I'm a little confused.
Then you just say that discretion, discretion is what makes it amb, ambiguous?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
We can't have it, we can't have it both ways. Either we have discretion or we have.
I mean, if the final decision is we're comfortable, I'm, I'm comfortable with how it's written and I'll prosecute the way it's written. And if that's what you're comfortable with, that's okay. That's gonna mean we're gonna focus on the more egregious violations and the ones that are unclear in the middle. Maybe they're a violation, maybe they're not. We're gonna say, you know what, if it's fifty-fifty call, we can't prove that beyond a reasonable doubt. And, and the downside of that is usually the person delivering that message is the police officer at the door of a person in Plain City complaining. So.
And I want to make something clear to those, and he had mentioned that it makes us uncomfortable to have to cite somebody and not, and I don't want to use the word uncomfortable. The, the problem with, is, is that we feel like these people that are making, like, have the right, the, the right to that privacy and the peace and quiet. But on the other hand, you have a business downtown that has been permitted to play music outside.
Competing.
So, so it's like, we're kind of in the middle of this, because I didn't give them permission to play music outside.
We didn't give them permission to play music.
And, but it's been allowed. So it's like, okay, so where do we draw the line at?
Well, the ordinance allows it.
What's that?
The ordinance allows bands, orchestras, entertainers in that district, so.
And to that point, I would note that Session F provides for exemptions to the statute. It specifically says, sound emanating from scheduled events conducted, sponsored, or permitted by the village. And so one thought I had was if there, perhaps there is a permit process or an application, it could be to council, village administrator, whoever, it wouldn't have to be anything too formal, but if there was approval, well, that would be a very clear exception and police department could rely on that. Perhaps you don't want to go that route, but I think that's something that can be accomplished fairly simply and probably would even require the modification of the ordinance.
So you, you started to say something, you were cut off, um, that the Madison County Court upheld this ordinance?
Yes.
This exact wording?
Yes.
So, so we gotta be careful, and I want to make sure that in everything that we've said, our ordinance is lawful, legal, enforceable, all of those words?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
It comes down to a factual issue.
Perfect, because, because a lot of times, I apologize, a lot of times those words are used loosely, and I want to be very clear about that. Um, and then you said something else that struck me in your statement. You said that the officer deemed it was reasonable. So how does a, a charge come from the village?
The charge was not filed with the court. The statute specifically says that a person making a complaint can sign the charge itself. So in that scenario, what happened was the complainant signed the complaint. It was sent to the prosecutor's office for review as to whether it would be appropriate to file the charge with the court.
Okay, so you didn't?
It was never filed.
So inherently, you didn't dismiss, was this dismiss or deny?
I'm sorry?
Was this the dismiss, dismiss or the deny?
This is the, the denial.
Denial, denial.
Case was declined for prosecution.
Decline for prosecution, sorry, I want to make sure I use the words right. So that really, you didn't really decline the village, because the village wasn't really chart, citing anyone. It was more of like a, uh, I, I, I want to make this, it was through our ordinance, the, a function through our ordinance that an individual, I'm guessing, did it? Uh, okay, so, so one option, and I'm not saying that, I want to break this into like, what do we want? I think that's what he was trying to get at, is like, what do we want? And is what we have lawful, enforceable, you know, those type of words? And it sounds like to me, what we have is one of multiple options. This is a option. This isn't unlawful, unenforceable. I don't know if it's what we want. I don't know if it's getting our, our desired outcome. But we gotta be very careful in saying like, this is unenforceable or this is, you know, unlawful or not. This is.
It's unlawful.
There, okay.
So, so you're okay with the ordinance as written, you would prosecute that?
Yes.
But for the fact that you didn't like the evidence? You didn't think they?
Every case has to be reviewed by the prosecutor's office to make sure that we can prove the case beyond a reasonable doubt.
Right.
If we think that we can't meet that burden at a very early stage, that we don't push it through and have.
So what was the problem with the evidence? What evidence do we have for that? We had a complaint from the resident that it was violating the law.
And the officer went out to the scene, he, he went to the site, he went fifty feet from the site. He took the time to listen to, you know, to the noise itself.
And that's a violation right there, because you can't hear it fifty feet. That's what the ordinance says, I believe.
It says.
It's unreasonable.
Fifty feet from the source, from the property line of the source.
That is not the only requirement. That's one element.
Okay, what's the other element? I must be missing that.
Reason.
For an unnecessary or unreasonable length of time.
Okay, so, so if, if we took that out of the ordinance, it would not change the fifty-foot requirement? And it would clarify your, maybe make it easier for you to prosecute then, wouldn't it?
You could definitely rewrite it so that there is a clear requirement that any noise that's outside of fifty feet that can be heard.
And a great.
Then you could get cited for mowing your grass.
You would have two hundred citations a day.
A great many villages, cities, municipalities have exactly that.
That's the wrong way to go.
It cannot be clearly audible fifty feet from the property line where that noise is being generated, and that's all there is to it. Okay, it's a, it's a, what do they call it? It, it's a, it's a clear line and it's meant to be strictly enforced. There's strict accountability for that. And there's no S, N's and B's about it.
This is what I was thinking to that, your desire is what's required, right? So what you want is counsel, I, I think, uh, you know, that's, that's gonna be the defining factor here, whether or not you want to.
Okay.
Or not. I, I don't know of any municipalities that have that restrictive a code, but I'm not familiar with many municipalities outside of Madison County.
About Columbus.
I know that West Jefferson does not have a noise ordinance. And London's is broken down into different types of.
Okay, you're talking Madison County, this, yeah, okay. But if, if we clarified and made it very, very clear, without any qualifying wording in there, if it's clearly audible fifty feet from the property line where the music, where the source, noise source is located, then it's a violation. If that was the sole substance of the ordinance, and I'm not talking without exceptions or stuff like that, you can always put those in. But if that was the total ordinance and, uh, it was a fact that that happened, could you prosecute that? I mean, an officer, this is not a big challenge for a police officer to hear, okay? He can stand fifty feet away. If he hears the music, that's a violation. Or if he hears noise, that's a violation. It's very clear then, unambiguous. Nobody can question it. Okay, I can hear it. I got three people standing here that can hear it. I mean, it's, it's, it's hearable.
What you're, what you're saying is very much akin to just having a decibel level set.
No, no, that's way different from a decibel level thing.
No, I, I don't.
Because this music at fifty feet.
Very clear what the violation is.
This music at fifty feet would be heard at a sixty-decibel level, okay? You would hear that, okay? That's not the point of the ordinance. It's written. It's at fifty feet, you don't need to hear it. And that keeps it away from the residential areas, which is what the ultimate goal of council is to do.
My point is that there's a very clear standard. That's why I'm saying it's comparable. Whether it's fifty feet or fifty decibels, there's a very clear standard. Beyond that, it's a violation, under that, it's not.
Right, they make it fifty feet, hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, you can set any number of it.
You can set any number.
It's a very clear standard.
Right.
But most people. But most people who have a foot requirement in it use fifty feet. The, the ones that I've seen, I mean, I, I've seen maybe a couple of dozen, I've looked them up, and that's pretty much fifty feet is it? But some have a hundred and fifty feet, I'll go with a hundred and fifty feet, if people wanna go with a hundred and fifty feet.
Like I said, I, I really don't have an agenda, it's what, what he wants.
No, no, I, I'm saying, can you prosecute that ordinance written that way?
Yeah, I, I don't see why not, I think you'd have to be careful with the exceptions, there are constitutional rights there.
Right, and you, we would wanna write exceptions, of, of course.
Exceptions would subsume the rule, that's the problem, it's like if your car backfires, you violated it.
Yeah, okay, so we're not gonna have a car backfire. No, you don't wanna be unreasonable with it, you just wanna put in the abuse, okay?
I think exceptions would be.
Yeah, the, the only, the only reasonable, and again, this is why I've said this repeatedly to council, and this is why it's really the only two options that ever come out. You're either gonna have the objectively reasonable standard where the officer has to stand there and listen and say, do I think this is, this would annoy, be an annoyance to a person of reasonable sensibilities? Or you have a decibel meter, because if you get into distances, you are going to have so many exceptions to that rule. Your engine started, your mower was going, all right, not lawn, lawn mowing activities, well, what if I decide to mow my lawn at eleven o'clock?
Okay, the minute you put, and a, 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 a reasonable person would be annoyed by it, leave that out, it's fifty feet, can I hear it? That's easy, it's, it doesn't require on anybody's opinion, I mean, you can hear it or you can't hear it.
Mr. Reed, I don't think fifty feet is gonna pass the rest of council's reasonable standard.
Perhaps not, but.
That is not a reasonable pass.
If council passes an ordinance that doesn't keep noise off of people's front porch in the residential area, then it's gonna fail. It will be no better than what we have.
No, 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 it won't fail, and this isn't failing, that is where you have to be careful. This is enforceable, this is lawful, if we pass one with decimal ratings, it will be enforceable and it'll be lawful. Not everyone will like it, you're saying, you're saying if fails, everyone doesn't like it, and that is a gross overstatement.
It's fifty feet in our ordinance.
It's never gonna be fifty feet, so.
It's fifty feet.
Listen, it's never gonna do that, so, you go and walk around, have you? Have you walked around?
Of course.
Okay, I have walked around, to be honest with you, and I've gone to lots of different places in the uptown area. I went on a Thursday, I went on a Friday, I went on a Saturday, I went on a Sunday. The only time that I could even begin to call it unreasonable, against a reasonable person's standard, was the Saturday with a band. Outside of that, the DJ, the Thursday nights, I, those are, we can, we are not trying to stop that. We are not trying to stunt business, we are not trying to do that, you may be, but I do not believe.
No, we're just trying to stop the noise, that's what.
I think you are.
Does the personal quality of life matter to you?
I would like, just for a second.
You live in that community, and we do. This is absurd, you wanna go.
Just for a second, just, let me have the floor for a second, Mr. Atkins is here.
Sure.
Let's let him have what he's got to say, if you would, go ahead uninterrupted, and then everybody can talk about it. I think, out of courtesy to Mr. Atkins for coming up here.
Thank you. I, I think the, the final thought I, I had, and one of the reasons why I said I'm comfortable with the statute, the ordinance remains as is, is because I can only think of two situations, I think, over the last year or so, where we've had charges that were either dismissed or declined because we couldn't move forward with prosecution. Now, I'm, I think there might have been additional situations where the officers never filed charges because they felt it wasn't appropriate to. But for charges to actually make it to the prosecutor's office and then be declined, I think, I think two in the last year. So, there's a lot of discussion about the, the noise ordinance and a lot of concern, but we haven't seen, you know, those issues at, at the municipal. Any other questions? Happy to answer questions.
Are there any changes to the ordinance that you saw that would improve it?
Improving the statute is subjective, because it depends on what you're trying to accomplish. So, I'm, I'm, I can think of changes, yes, but whether or not that's beneficial, I don't know.
Yeah, well, okay, I appreciate that, and that's fair, but if you could just maybe, when you go back to your office, jot down a few notes of improvements, plus or minus, when you know, whatever you think, uh, would be useful, that, you know, and communicate that to, to the council here.
When I'm looking at criminal prosecution, I wanna make sure that the person I'm prosecuting that's subject to a jail sentence knows what standard, you know, they're, they're held to, you know, and knows when they look at the statute, what they need to do to be compliant with the statute. And if, if there is uncertainty, well, that concerns me, because I don't feel like I'm doing my job of effectively advocating on behalf of the county when I don't even know if they're able to comply with it.
Right.
I know some statutes, uh, we talked about other municipalities, some just have, um, a period of time where, you know, this has primordial evidence of violation, some just say the noise ordinance kicks into effect at X time, after that and before that. That, that's, you know, that, that clear line in the sand, that, that was one that I had, but, um, this allows for the officers to implement their discretion. From the reports I've read from the Plain City Police Department, I mean, they are really doing their due diligence of, you know, going around to different points, going at certain distances, you know, listening over a long period of time, documenting how many complaints have been made and by who. So, there's a lot of information to rely on, and I get the benefit of seeing all of that, I know everybody doesn't have that same benefit. But, uh, they're, they're taking this seriously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Mr. Sims? I was a witness in a case that was dismissed, and I talked with the prosecutor in Madison County. You know, Rachel Davis, is it okay if I share some things there?
Upjected.
Yeah, I'm gonna upcheck right now.
I have some very specific answers to the questions you all that asked.
Okay, but this isn't, this isn't a public forum right now, and what we need to do from a council perspective is decide, I've got questions of my own for Mr., for, uh, Chief, and I think we need to have some discussions about our move forward. We have lots of information, we know this has been brought up before, but this isn't a public hearing.
When are you going to have an open session?
That's, that's what we need.
And speak more than just two minutes?
Ma'am.
When?
That's what we, that's what we need to discuss.
They can visit.
Yeah, you can always, you can always visit a meeting.
Two minutes is all you get to speak, though?
No.
No, you get five.
Five minutes, wow. We have a lot of information.
You're asking for examples, and people have.
I have a very specific example.
Are you open to other examples from other municipalities?
So, I, what we're open to right now is to have a discussion to find out how we're going to move forward with this and have these discussions. So, I would like to request that you allow us to have these.
We're talking about not two years, you got years, yeah, it's been done.
Okay, all right, time out, time out, look, just so everybody's clear, we've, we've, every now and then we have to have this discussion with the public. It's never, nobody's ever trying to cut you out or silence you or anything, the issue is, pardon me. The, the fact is, this is a work session of council, this is our business meeting. This is the only time that this council gets to get together and have a meeting to do the business that's on their agenda. Same thing with their council meetings, council meetings, they open it up more and allow the public to come in and allow visitors. Work sessions, we are here to do work that's on an agenda because they have limited time to be able to do this. Once we work through it, if there's an opportunity, if there's going to be a suggested change to the ordinance, or if you wanted to come to a council meeting and speak at the council meeting, you speak then. If we have a public hearing on a change to the ordinance, you're all invited to talk, you all have your opportunity to talk then. That's the only way that this functions and functions reasonably where, where council can get the job done. Um, so that's, so.
Are you giving legal advice, or are you?
No, that's the law.
Decisions for the council?
I don't make decisions for the council. I'm telling you that that's the way this meeting operates, though, and that's the way it all, and, and that is the law of Ohio. The public does not have a right to speak at a public meeting of, of the board. You are invited to, time is set aside at reg, regular, uh, council meetings where the public can approach and speak and get on the agenda to, to, to speak, but in work sessions, that is not the case. Don't invite, uh, visitors for work sessions, because these are very specific agenda items that they have to get done, so they do their work and, and, and accomplish what has to be done and still be able to get home and have dinner with their families.
And because you guys have brought up comments before in our council meetings, that's why it's on the agenda tonight. We discuss as a council, this has to be on, we weren't gonna discuss this until further in the year, if I remember right. We, on our list at the beginning of the year, we had this at a different work session, but I remember, I think it was last month or the month before, we said we need to put it earlier, if I remember, because we've had people come and talk. So, your voice has been heard, that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
We, we had a public meeting before this ordinance was done. And that's when we did it, the first time we had a large public meeting to hear people talk. I think that's where they get confused, right, because we did have that meeting, there were a lot of talk there.
Town hall.
So.
The town hall.
It was a town hall meeting.
And then you have a, a regularly, then you have a mandated hearing.
The rhetoric here is unbelievable, like, this is, the discourse and rhetoric of the last two meetings has been so appalling as a resident of Plain City and a member of this council, between insults and everything. Can we just get back to having a conversation like we were before? Let's just move it, let's not address, let's move back.
Yep, so, uh, Chief Mickey, you, you asked for this, did you move, you know, something we discussed, but you, you wanted us to escalate this, and so I wanted to make sure that we understand from your perspective where the, where you're running into issues with this, with the ordinance.
It was just plain, well, just Mr. Atkins, all that, so, I mean, this isn't often new, I, I mean, I've, I've said it's been subjective for the last three years, I've said that.
Yep.
And it finally got to the point where he verified it, I think he confirmed that, so, and it had to take, unfortunately, somebody on the court, or a citation being written to, to find out that it wasn't being upheld.
I think there's two, there's two major issues right here, so you have our noise ordinance, which up until, you know, within the last two to three years, has been sufficient enough. And then we have more added businesses coming into the uptown, I know Mr. Medici before the meeting, um, handed an email, and I think I talked to you, I'm not going to engage, but I talked to him, like, afterwards, I just didn't reply to the email, but, um, I thi, I think that it's going to be very imperative moving forward, outside of the noise ordinance, that it goes back to the zoning code and talking about different types of music in the uptown, and that if you get more businesses doing different types of music, that they can conflict or will conflict with each other. I would like to see us look into different versions such as acoustic, where you take the amplified sound out, and if you want a concert with amplified sound, you get so many permits per year, so that you have that, um, and each business can apply for that permit through, through the village. And where we, we don't have this constant, where you have, you can, if one business decides that they just want a nice patio where you can have ice cream or coffee or something, that you can go out and enjoy it, but then you can also have the, you know, acoustic music and not stifle your business if you want that too, because I know the village will only be as successful as the residents enjoying the businesses, the businesses that are there for the residents. So, that, that's my soapbox for tonight, is I think that we need to really look at the zoning on it. It really takes it out of the noise ordinance portion, because Mr. Atkins stated that it can be upheld, but obviously that there was a conflict between one person thinking it was, um, it, it unreasonable and, and the office reporting reasonable.
Or nervous sensibilities, but.
Yeah, so.
Mayor, I, I appreciate your comments.
Mr. Atkins started, sorry.
I just wanna clarify, that, that kind of analysis happens with, with every statute, with every ordinance, it doesn't matter if it's theft or assault or, or a noise ordinance. There's always an evaluation as to whether the evidence is sufficient enough to prove the case beyond a reasonable doubt, it's not what we need to disprove.
Mayor, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments on that, um, but the bottom line is still gonna be forever. It doesn't matter if it's amplified or if somebody's tweaking a one-string banjo. If it's traveling into the residential area and you can hear it fifty feet outside the property line, it's a violation. So, just keep, please keep in that mind, and reducing the amplification would reduce the intensity, but if you can hear those guitars playing, or those trombones, if you will, playing on the residence's front porch, that's a violation. So, we need to get to keeping the noise out of the residential areas. It's a health issue, I know we haven't used that word before, but if people are not able to sleep at night, or if they have, they, they, they work at night and they're not able to sleep during the day because of noise emanating from the uptown area, that's, that's, those businesses uptown do not have rights that supersede the residents' rights to have peace and quiet on their property. So, please also keep that in mind as we proceed through these discussions, it's the noise, whatever.
Ask, Mr. Reed, how, how is that any different than the, the music in the park and the people on parks speaking here?
Two things, one is music in the park is a village event, oh, I have, no, music in the park is a village-sponsored event. If people, uh, complain about the noise, the music from music in the park, they can come to council. So far, nobody has complained about.
Okay, but we could also just.
Because it's not amplified.
Not even a handful of people's made a complaint about downtown, we could say the same thing, and we have to be careful when we say it's a village event, because is the village, is it okay for the village to violate its own ordinance?
It's, no, it's in the ordinance, Chief, that, that if it's a village event or it's permitted, then, then, then the restrictions do not apply, okay? Those are one-offs or, are occasional, and the ordinance should be written that way, that you can have celebrations, you can have a parade downtown, you can have a, a rock, a clock, if you will, and nobody's gonna say anything about that. But it's the constant, day in and day out, four days a weekend, of interruption of their lives that has got people upset, and I, I venture to say that if, uh, maybe I'm wrong in making this assessment, that people on council had to live next door and experience that where their children couldn't get any rest, then they might maybe have a different opinion about it, but.
That's, that's a really good point that you just brought up, because part of the problem is that we have different districts. We have an uptown business district, and unfortunately, the uptown business, you know, fortunate, unfortunate, however you wanna look at it, there are borders, where the uptown business district makes a border with a residential district.
Right.
And so, it, that's, I, I, and I'm.
I understand.
I don't know any other good way around it, because if you put a fit, let's, let's say you have a business that's right at the edge, the furthest permitted use in a B-three district, and they can have entertainment.
I would suggest that.
If the house next door is fifty feet away, they're gonna hear the noise, I mean, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
I hear you.
I'm not criticizing anything, I'm just trying to say these are the practicalities.
That's the point, and we have a business across the street from the, from the, from the principal noise source in the uptown who has stated on numerous occasions that he can't work at night in his business because of the noise emanating right across the street, more than fifty feet away, so I would suggest we make the same, because, because honestly, uptown is an integrated residential district. It's hard to, it's hard to tell where the residence is starting, the business is stopped, um, at some point, it's a gray area. So, I, I think we have to have the same standard for, for both commercial and residential districts. So, it's a problem, and if you just try to blow it off with, with, okay, businesses have a right to do business in the uptown, businesses don't get a vote in Plain City, you know, they, they are here on a privilege. The residents vote, they're the ones that determine what happens, and they're the ones that elected you. Um, so, pay attention to the residents, it's more than the businesses, they're the ones that, that live here and make the culture and make the rest of it, so. I'm sorry, I didn't talk too much.
Any other topics to discuss, or not topics, any other discussion on this?
I would just like to say, I, I agree with Mayor Carney, and I think I've been talking about this for a little while, that including the artificially amplified phraseology might be the, the least problematic approach to this. I think it, it, it takes a lot of subjectivity out of it, I mean, it's either artificially amplified. I mean, it's either artificially amplified or it's not artificially amplified.
You still have, you still have the exceptions. Are you suggesting on every night?
Huh?
Are you suggesting across the board on every night?
Yeah.
And then if you want to, if you want to have an amplified concert, you get so many permits that, and then that way, it's, it's advertised that way, but it's not then like subjective that you couldn't have it Monday through Saturday or something.
Certainly, so again, like when I, when I walk around, I walk around with others, the, the Thursday and Sunday's a problem. Right? Because like generically speaking, that's not the weekend, right? So, like, I am all on board on that, even though oddly, the Thursday, I went and had pizza there and like, it was like, it wasn't quiet by any means, but it wasn't like, it, it, it passed my reasonable standard, right? So, but I'm okay with that on Thursday and Friday, or Thursday and Sunday, certainly. On Friday and Saturday, I, I'm, I'm wondering if, from an administrative purpose, if it doesn't make more sense just to do the decimal rating thing? And we can have an argument for all days. And I, I think the argument, we need to get off the argument of like enforceability or not of the actual thing and get on to what is going to be our reasonable thing and then take it. Because I do agree, taking it out of the discretionary is a good idea.
And time, time, I don't think time is, I mean, I understand there's a sensibility for sleep and things like that, but Monday afternoon, I don't want to sit on my front porch and listen to my neighbor playing hip hop or, or new country or whatever that crap is or.
I think time and, I think time and date, time and day of the week, I guess not date, is like the crucial thing. And I, I could be on board with like, you know, saying this many on Friday and Saturdays. I'm also probably on board with just decimals and like setting it and saying, and what I would do and to Mr. Reed, so Mr. Reed wants to do, I believe, where you can hear it. I think that's going to be really tricky because of the wind blowing and bouncing off things. I would do it where it originates and say, you can't have it exceed this threshold originate at this location. And then they don't have to walk around town, they can just go to one location and be like, it's over this decimal originating from this location, you're too loud. Or it's under, I don't have to answer that. Because if you do it distance, if you do all these like distance and everything, I, I'll tell you like with the, like, when I walked one place, it didn't, I couldn't hear it. I walked another place, there wasn't ability in the way I could hear it. So, you're, you're gonna, they're gonna have just as hard of a time enforcing that. So, I would do it, I, I, now, what is reasonable? That's where I think Mr. Reed and I are gonna, like where we have our disagreement. And that's a legitimate argument to have. But I think if we're trying to say, okay, can we enforce it? Can it be cut dry? Can the business, business understand when they're going to be violated? So, to Mr. Atkins' point, he can say to them, you knew that you couldn't go over, I'm gonna make up a number, I know nothing about decimals, 100 decimals, you knew you can't go over that, you went over that, you were violating, I can enforce that, I can prosecute that, I can do that. Seems way more cut and dry than all these other, now, I will say that the, the, your idea actually is pretty enforceable too, but did you have that thing or not? Like, seems pretty enforceable to me, if you go to them and say, did you have one? You're getting into a lot of administration stuff there, so I, 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 I'm okay with it, I, I'm not against it. But I think that you're gonna have just people, the, the same people asking every week for.
You get so many. I think you get so many for like seeing that, in my opinion.
Just to clarify, we need to watch what we're saying, because when the noise, we're, we're focused on one.
Yeah, one institution.
And this may actually be your neighbor that we're talking about, or this is going to be something else. So, we gotta remember, we're not just talking about one spot here, it's pretty noise, we're talking about whole town. And that's gotta apply. And also with the decimal meter, and I don't know, like Mr. Atkins said, I, you know, I don't know how that plays in court because I don't know that the judge has to recognize that decimal metering and say that that's a misstep in court.
Well, it'd be like an OVI.
It's like our radars, in our cruisers, those radars have to pass a certain standard before they're misused in court. You would have to.
Be calibrated.
Calibration.
Yes, operated accurately.
And you have to be trained in the use of. Have you been properly certified in the use of this depth meter?
I don't want to be there, no.
But that's why I, I think that it is too separate. We don't want, we want to be harmonious, like, that's where it, right now, it, I feel like it's the resident hit against business owners.
Sure.
Future business owners too, because, you know, there's different buildings and such. But I think that, like, I, I sympathize in, in the areas that if you knew how many like amplified concerts or, you know, that could be potentially there versus like the, you know, your.
You're still gonna have to set limits, right? Because and if you end up with four restaurants or four entities or four addresses, are you gonna say that we're gonna start denying individ- like, it's, it's, it's certainly doable. There are slippery slopes there where one entity gets 10 and another entity across the street gets 10, another entity gets 10, and the residents are still hearing it 30 straight days because if you said yes to that person, you better have a good reason not to say yes to that person. And the answer can't be, well, we just had a concert last week. It has to be some sort of fair and bi- fair and biased, which is why I'm saying, a little bit of me just says like, and again, your neighbor, I could say, you're too loud, Carrie, you, you are over 100 decimals, like, I, I get, I, I, I don't know, I just think everything else causes slippery slopes. But I'm open to it, but I think we're gonna have a healthy debate over what that decimal should be. And I think that's kind of the root question of all this. Because I think we have everything from zero to reasonable.
And you're right, because I know when we looked at the decimal meetings the last time, that basically, I mean, like, just walking down the street, 50 or 60 decimals, you know, and what does that mean when you're at, at a residential house that's four miles down the road? What's that number gonna be there? To, you know, because I don't feel like that that's gonna make, there's still gonna be something unhappy with that, the, the reading on that. Because when I walked around with that, I was kind of shocked by what the number said on it. When we had, we borrowed one from, I think it was the Hillier Police Department, because I think Hillier's the only one that uses that. And I just wanted, it was funny to find out that they've never actually even used that decimal metering or meter in the five years that they've had, so.
And you did.
They didn't even know where it was when I went to figure it out.
And you did say it would have to be ver- you'd have to verify that it was calibrated correctly at each case.
Every officer would have to certify somehow.
A good, a realizer.
Yeah.
Very similar. Now, I think the brand could be, you could use established case on a brand product to indicate that that's a reliable product, but it's something calibrated to show us.
Right. And trained how to use it. It's not just holding it up and getting a reading.
This is the same with our radars on cruisers, we have to be certified on those, then we have to know how they operate, we have to check the calibration every day on those before we use them. And after time is written, the citation's written, we have to check the calibration on it. Just to prove that in court that it was operating correctly. Same way with the realizer machine, when somebody comes in, we have to test the point of that, it was operating properly, we did the calibration checks, we did this and that. So, each officer would have to do that also with the decimal meter.
That's why I feel like it's better in a, in a zoning code, like, not the noise ordinance, but into something with the zoning code.
I think you're getting to the same debate though, what is the right level in the zoning code? So, I think there's an underlying debate that's gonna come out.
You know, just like when Mr. Reed was saying 50 feet, that, you know, 50 feet is a inherent probability of us, I mean, it's just not.
We were yelled at louder than 50 feet away.
Yeah, that's the standard that, that a lot of municipalities use, is not unusual. And somehow they force it and deal with it and things go along merrily along.
Could you email us a list of those municipalities, please?
I can provide that for you, yes. I do not have, I'll be happy to do that. We'll start with Columbus, okay? The big, the little elephant in the room.
So, not me sitting here, but it, but, but it would be beneficial to send that. And I'm gonna look out at the, I'm gonna look out here at you. There are some folks that have some documents. I would ask, I'm, I'm asking you to send those to me, my email. And I would, I would request that you not chew me out in the email, but send those to me so that we can review this, we can add that to the discussion. I don't want you to not have a voice. And if you've got, I mean, we've all done a lot of research and, and looked at ordinances, but maybe I didn't see the one you're talking about. And so, I would like to see that and send that to me and we'll get the ones from Frank and we'll, and we'll, and we'll broaden this, we'll broaden our knowledge even more.
So, is that gonna convince you if we get the big list of 50-foot people to support the 50-foot standard? Which is in our ordinance right now, I could start with Plain City. Does Plain City's.
This is no noise at 50 feet.
That's.
Our ordinance is no noise at 50 feet.
Mr. Reed, I'm, I'm not gonna answer that right now because, because these are, these are ordinances and they, I would like to see what they are. I'd like to see the different ones that I haven't seen. And then it might be interesting to find out what the, how they're actually been enforced, right? So.
I, I doubt a Clippers gate can't be heard 50 feet from the Clippers.
So.
Mr. Austin, Madison County. Are we in all months where I can start taking this going forward? Have you? You just talked about Seattle, London has noise ordinance.
London does have a noise ordinance. I can, I remember a noise ordinance trial out of a London citation, it was over 10 years ago. I don't see it in a case, but it's been a long time since I've seen one of that.
So, we have a uniquely upset population base.
That's, I, I don't know, I can't. What I can say is that some of the more recent cases I reviewed, there's conflicting in that.
Is there any more discussion on this tonight? Okay. This is, this is a, this is a topic that isn't dead tonight. So, it's still going to be, we're going to, we're gonna move forward with, with putting together what we think is a, is a good move forward state. And it will be done with gathering some additional evidence and then we'll see what the next steps are. So, I'm gonna close this item for tonight. And now I believe we have one executive session. So, can I get?
No, you may for calling.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, we have executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121 dot 22G8.
This ordinance, it doesn't have any standards at all, just.
Mr. Reed, we're trying to move into the next phase. To consider confidential information related to.
Kayla's still here.
Oh, yeah.
We're not coming back for business, we're in an executive session.
Okay, I was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. Sorry.
So moved.
All right, pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121 dot 22G8, to consider confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is that good?
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. G Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rockin?
Yes. Kayla knows her process, man.